Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting, June 25th, 2019. We're starting at 6:30, just so we can open the meeting, and then we're going to close to go into executive session for probably about a half hour, and then we'll reopen the meeting back up. So I'll have Clark read the executive session while we're going in.
The purpose of this executive session is to conduct a strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, to wit, William Keegan, Town Manager, and Michael John's Assistant Town Manager. To conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares it, to wit, William Keegan, Town Manager, Michael John's Assistant Town Manager. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, with the police union. Board of Selectmen vote at the end of executive session. Vote to adjourn for the executive session and return to the open meeting.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Leah, yes?
Mark, yes?
David, yes.
Ed O'Leary, yes.
Great. Thank you. See you in a half hour. All right, welcome back, everybody. Sorry we're a few minutes late. I'll go over the agenda. So at 7 o'clock, even though we're late, Citizens Input, 7:05 Foxborough Cultural Council Appointment, 7:15 a public hearing, Craft Sports Entertainment LLC, the Rolling Stones No Filter Tour. At 7:30, a public hearing, New England Authentic Eats LLC, doing business as Papagino's at 211 North Street. 7:45, we have another public hearing, again, New England Authentic Eats LLC, doing business as Papagino's on 8 Commercial Street. 8 o'clock, Stakes Are High Event on the Town Commons. 8:25, Fiscal Year 19 Reserve Fund Transfer, we'll have a discussion. 8:50 Parking Lot Agreement with Schneider Electric. 9:05, reappoint interim Finance Director, Town Accountant. 9:10, Town Manager Evaluation. 9:40, Selectmen's Update. 9:45, Town Managers Update. 9:50, Assistant Town Managers Update. And then we have a few action items. So Dave, do you want to lead us?
Sure. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything, and justice for all.
Ed O'Leary was with us during the executive session, but he had to leave for another engagement. All right, Citizens Input. Absolutely, come on out.
Good evening. Pat Stevens, 63 Mechanic Street. The YMCA started their camps last week. I don't know if any of you have been there when they're getting, when the students that are the councilors are getting out and crossing over. But I hope it's not a problem, because some of them are going out the way they used to go out and crossing where people drive in. Some of them are going out where the crosswalk is at Pleasant Street, but not going to the crosswalk. And some are crossing the street and crossing over with the crosswalk. So, just an FYI to everybody.
Yeah, I can mention it to Patrick Murphy again, as well.
I know we can't make these kids do what they're supposed to do, but I just don't. Pleasant Street is busy. I mean, I came home today and 495 caused everybody to get off Mechanic Street again, so I'm just concerned. You know, that's all I am.
No, I appreciate that, because you're there, you see it.
I do. So, all right, thank you.
Anyone else with Citizens Input? 7:05, right on time. Foxborough Council on Aging Appointment.
Cultural Council?
Culture.
I don't know why I was saying.
Well, pick me out, too.
No wonder you're looking at me strange.
No, I just, not aging that fast. Yeah. I'm Jared Craig. I am the Chair of the Foxborough Cultural Council, and I'm here to present Gwen Stinson and nominate her to join the Cultural Council with your approval. I also just want to thank all of you for your support of the Cultural Council this past year. I don't think I've seen most of you in a year, but we always feel very supported by the Board, and you attend our events, and you're always very vocal, and we do appreciate the support. That comes from the whole Council. We always mention how great it's been to serve you guys and the town. Gwen is, I think, relatively new to town. She's joined our meetings. She's come as a citizen and would like to join the Council. She's very enthusiastic and energetic, and I think we could really use her as we continue to try to grow the Cultural Council in town, especially with all the new things that are popping up downtown and uptown around the Commons. So I'd like to let Gwen speak for herself and give you some background.
Hello, my name is Gwen Stinson. I'm born and raised in Boston, moved to Foxborough 2016. I have two girls. One's in college, graduating this year, very excited mom, and one's at the high school, and she does not want to leave Foxborough, so we will be here. So I'm an artist myself. Both of my kids are artists and pianists and dancers, and I come from a line family of creative people. And I've always been involved in the arts, and I'm a poet, so I've always been involved in some way with the libraries wherever I live. And I spent a lot of time living on North Shore, and we kind of accidentally ended up in Foxborough, but now we're making it our home, so I definitely want to be involved with the Cultural Council, and I'm working with the library right now to do a poetry event, an annual poetry event there in October, so I'm hoping to really get involved with the town. Yeah.
I remember meeting you at the reception.
That's right.
You had a great energy, and you kind of stuck out.
I knew you looked familiar.
You came over and introduced yourself.
Definitely. I love people, all ages.
Well, if you have half as much energy as Jared does, you'll be a good one.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. We're meeting.
Right, double.
Definitely.
Okay, anybody else?
The only thing I was just going to mention, you know I've been talking about the reappointment kind of cleanup, is I noticed that you guys have members up in March, April, May, June, July, September, October. So, you know, since you have those two grant cycles, I don't know if you have any appetite for maybe like, you know, June and October as you move forward, just to think about.
Oh, great.
So, I know you're June anyway, but just something to consider.
Yeah, oh, no, that's a great suggestion, and it's really, that's handed down to us from the state. You know, whenever we join, we're allowed to do two, three-year cycles. I'll keep that in mind, thank you.
All right, great.
No, good.
Good.
Welcome, welcome to Foxborough.
Thank you.
All right, so move to appoint Gwendolyn Stinson to the Foxborough Cultural Council for a three-year term, expiring June 11th, 2022.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
All righty, public hearing, Craft Sports and Entertainment, Rolling Stones.
I know, we're two minutes early, I hope you don't mind.
According to the computer, we're ready.
Very rarely am I two minutes early, so let's all enjoy this moment.
All right, so move to open public hearing.
Second.
Aye.
The Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 140, Section 181, Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter 229, and also the stadium rules and regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 25th, 2019, beginning at 7:15 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, to review the application submitted by Craft Sports and Entertainment LLC for the Rolling Stones No Filter Tour. Promoter is Paul Gongaware, Concerts West. Event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the Board of Selectmen.
Good evening, thanks for having me. Jess Yunos with Craft Sports and Entertainment, here to request the license for the Rolling Stones No Filter Tour. You may recall, this tour was announced back in November, and our original tour date was actually June 8th, and then Mick Jagger required open-heart surgery, and so everything was temporarily postponed, and then we found out a few weeks ago that our date had been rescheduled to July 7th. So the show itself, we've had in the past, not the specific tour, but we've had them, so we're familiar with sort of what they come with, what this fan base looks like. The biggest challenger, the biggest sort of pickup, has just been this reschedule. So for fans that had purchased tickets, they had the opportunity to get a full refund at the point of purchase. Because this show sold out as quickly as it did, and it was as in demand as it is, we didn't have many people take us up on that, but there were some. So the refund process has run smoothly, and now we're two weeks away from the actual show. So show details themselves, we shifted from a Saturday show to a Sunday show, too, which isn't always the most desirable, but we're now Sunday, July 7th. The timing is lots at 3:30, gates at 6, and the show start time at 7:30. They do have an opening act. It is an AEG Concerts West production. We've had them in the building before. If it's not a Craft Sports and Entertainment-produced event, then it's typically Live Nation or AEG Concerts West. They're the next biggest promoter in the industry, so we're familiar with them. And the Dotleys, Jackie will provide support from a production standpoint. It is a sold-out show, so we do anticipate 52,000 people in the building. All stadium tiers will be open. There's a small GA space at the front of the stage, not unlike what we saw this Friday with Luke Bryan, a little bit less than 1,300 people in that space. Ticket prices started at $65 for face value and went all the way up to $499, so it's a really expensive show to go to. And we have made the request with the MBTA, we're hopefully, we're really close to being able to confirm it, to give people that option of taking public transit to the building.
Stadium advisory.
We reviewed the event, and both police fire, saw no issues. This will be the first major concert with the regional dispatch, so that, I think it's a good thing. And, you know, we talked a bit about, not so much this concert, but just in general, their ability to block certain of the shortcuts that are very beneficial. The bigger concerts seem to be easier because of the way the access is rerouted, so Stadium has done a nice job on that. And I guess the only other thing that came up was Uber and Lyft is becoming so popular that Jess and the Stadium is looking at how to potentially.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll have the same rideshare lot operational that we've had for the last two years in place, which is down in our south retail complex, but definitely holistically we're looking at how to handle rideshare, because it's only getting bigger, it's becoming more and more popular, and we're seeing more fans come to the building via rideshare app. So it's figuring out how to get them on the site best, how to have them exit best, you know, what the experience for the fan is like, and where they're getting dropped off. So we've got a, we're in a good place now in that it's been operational for a couple of years, but I think in the coming year, we'll probably look to make a change and figure out a little more efficient operation for rideshare.
Yeah, we were very impressed that, you know, tackling it or looking at it before it becomes, you know, more of an issue. So that's all I had. I have one last thing after this, just the, once this is finished. Thank you.
Yeah, speaking about directions and things, I heard that Waze doesn't use Beach Street anymore as a cut through. Someone told me that the last, these last two concerts.
Yes.
Come up.
Yeah, we were really proactive with that. So for the last, for the events on Friday and Saturday night, that full traffic reroute slash shutdown complement was in place, which was nice, we didn't have any issues. We checked in with the residents that we knew had had problems with the last two events at the Stadium, and thankfully, didn't have any issues at all.
Yeah, I got a call from, you know, a friend on Beach Street who has become a friend through the, you know, handling the issues, and he complimented, you know, I got a text from him Saturday night saying, "It's great." So, thank you, Jess. Yeah, that is great.
Any questions?
No, I don't think so.
Public hearing, anybody else in the audience have any questions or thoughts? All right, great. Move to.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, move to approve Gillette Stadium event application for the Rolling Stones No Filter Tour on July 7th, 2019.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Great, thank you.
George, you had one other thing?
Probably the last time this concert will ever be approved by a Board of Selectmen in this town. Could very well be, right?
It's kind of morbid then.
It's significant, though, too. I think, you know, that's history in the making, too, when you think about it, because he's been, the Rolling Stones have been an icon since the 1960s, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So think about, that's five decades, you know, extraordinary, absolutely extraordinary. So congratulations for being the final one to do that.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a minute. One of our members is going to be retiring from the committee, and he has been with the committee since the beginning, Frank Baresi. So I just wanted to communicate that and say that we're probably going to want to do something at our next meeting. We're going to talk to you, Jess, about putting on a little bit of a party. And I would like to probably try and drag him here. I know we have the Patriots to do at least.
Yep.
So we have another, but I just want to make you aware of that. And he has been an advocate of the town and of the area off of North Street, and very faithful, and I just wanted to let you know.
Excellent.
Definitely.
He's in his 90s, so I mean. Thanks, George.
Thank you, George.
Thanks, George.
Bye, Jess. All righty. Well, now we're a little bit ahead of time. Can we talk about Stakes Are High? Is that?
No.
Action items, okay. So we'll switch over to some action items, if you would please fill in, Clark?
Yes. So the first one, move to reappoint Boards and Committee members with terms expiring 6/30 and 7/1, sorry, 6/30, 2020, and 7/1, 2022.
Second. All those in favor?
I have some discussion again under reappointing.
Oh, I apologize.
So a majority of the Economics Development Committee is up for reappointment, and, you know, looking at a meeting that was canceled for the 12th, I know they were going to talk a little about their mission and things like that, I don't know why it was canceled, but as the committee kind of grows, maybe we consider, you know, how many people are on this? Do we want people from uptown to be represented, from Forbes Crossing, from, you know, Bradley's Plaza? So, you know, just some food for thought before we reappoint. You know, I know that they are looking at their mission, how many members they have, who they are, so I just wanted to bring that up for consideration.
The good thing with that is all of these are one-year appointments, so there's definitely time to kind of shape that committee. And, I mean, they should be, it looks like seven appointments for one year, so there should be some staggered terms in there, too.
Yeah, that's a good point, too. And I don't know if everyone lives in town, too, on this committee. Yeah, I don't, I think a couple of them don't, so I mean, I think that the composition of this particular committee probably could be looked at. I know it was last looked at, probably David, you can tell us better than anyone, but just some.
Well, when we brought this committee back, we thought it'd probably be a good idea to have the two biggest employers part of the Economic Development Committee, at least, to start out with. So, obviously, representatives from Schneider Electric in the craft group there. So, but I know the last meeting was canceled because they didn't have a call.
But I know there's, as far as I know, there's no one from uptown, and there's the new downtown business collaboration. You know, Forbes Crossing is a lot bigger now, so I think we should look at how many members, I think we need more definition on the committee, and I think we need to look at broadening who makes up that committee.
Okay. When we get together, maybe talk to Bill about it one day and. Yeah, absolutely. I think you're right.
For the consideration.
Yeah.
So do we want to find out what their mission is and how many members they have first, or do we want to approve and then do that?
I think we should approve, since most of them are a year appointment anyway, and then have this, these next few months to come up with a new policy or a new guideline, mission for them, to include all of them, the entire town. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Keep going.
Yep.
All right, move to approve public event application for Wampanoag Roadrunners 25th Annual Old Fashioned 10 Mile and 5K Road Race on February 16th, 2020, with a snow date of March 8th, 2020, to start at 10:00 AM.
Second.
Seems strange that we're talking snow dates in the June, but.
Yeah, but they always come in front of us in the beginning of the summer.
I've done that one with the snow on the ground.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Move to approve Foxborough Realty Associates' application for two one-day wine and malt beverage liquor licenses for July 20th and 21st, 2019, for the Mad Decent Music Festival.
Second. Any discussion with the Foxborough Realty Associates?
It's still the, it's part of the, it's a division of the craft group.
Oh, that's right. Right, we needed that separate area. We discussed that, yeah, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept a gift donation of $625 to the Foxborough Historical Commission from Sherri Goodwin, Proceeds of the Foxborough Founder's Day, Quilt for Cemetery Restoration.
Second. That was a gorgeous quilt.
Which I wanted.
I know, that was. Sherri did a great job on that, that was beautiful. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept gift donation of $200 to Foxborough Recreation from the Court Queen of Peace Catholic Daughters of America for Booth Summer Program scholarships.
Second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept a gift donation of $2,400 to the Recreation Department from Igo Cares to pay for five children to attend the 2019 Booth Summer Program.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the last two, just to approve separately, so move to approve the meeting minutes for May 28th, 2019.
Second. All righty, any discussion? Any changes, tentums?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then move to approve the May 29th, 2019 meeting minutes.
Second. Any discussion, changes?
I'll abstain since I was absent.
Yeah, that's right. All those in favor?
Aye.
With three and one abstained. All right, still a little early, so we'll, Bill, you ready for Town Managers Update?
Sure, I'll give you, just a couple items that I think. One was the, yesterday, Mike and I had the privilege of being at the graduation for the Suffolk University-Mockley Center for Public Management commencement for folks who made it through the Certificate Program for Local Government Leadership and Management. And I'm proud to say that this committee actually hosted that in this very room for the past, what was about six, eight months?
Yeah, since, about eight months.
And every Friday for most of that period of time. I'm also proud to say that we had three graduates of that program, which is extraordinary, because now, when you look at the staff, we have five members who've actually graduated from that program. We had six, and Mary Beth left, so, but there was, there were five members, which I don't know of anybody who has five members who've graduated from the program, so I think that's just extraordinary. But we're pleased to be there for the graduation of Aaron Hyer, of Veronica Harvey, who, by the way, graduated with distinction, and also of Christina Metcalf, who was one of the speakers at the graduation as well, and did a terrific job. So I just want to say congratulations to them. I would really like to bring all three of them before the Board at your next meeting to, so you can formally congratulate them, but it's really quite, it's quite an accomplishment. It's a lot of work, and they put a lot of time into it, and Mike is a graduate of that program as well, so he can probably attest to the fact that it's not, they say it's going to be six hours worth of work after class, it's more like 60 hours of work after class, and it's a lot, it's a lot of time and effort to put into it. So I'll turn it over to you.
Fantastic program, and this is, you know, by design, these are all folks that are working full-time. They must be employed in municipal government, and so, you know, they're all full-time, and they're all, you know, fast-tracking in their areas of expertise, or, you know, targeted to move up in management in local government, so, you know, so it is really neat. Nick Riccio is someone who is on staff, who has been through that course, but the three who just graduated, you know, they did spend one full day a week, and between 12 and 20 hours a week after class, working on papers, research, reading, and presentations, so we're really proud of them.
All right. So I think we'll try and get you, get them before you next week, too, or next meeting to recognize them. The other thing is that last Thursday night, we held our Civic Engagement Focus Group event at the middle school, where we invited close to 50 residents of the community to participate in a housing, discussion on housing. We had an actual survey in the community where close to 800 people responded to the issue of housing, because we all know that housing is becoming more and more an affordability factor for a lot of folks, and I know Paige has been pursuing this, and this is actually part of our leadership program, leadership project that we've adopted for this community as part of the Leadership Matters Program. So it was interesting, because we had nearly just about everybody showed up, there was a few folks that couldn't make it last minute, but we had a really good attendance, and everybody who participated in the program thought it was great. I know that Leah participated in some of the development of the folks that participated in that. And we are going to have another group session in the fall, so we thought we'd get one in before the summer, another one in the fall. And those that participated, all of them, just nearly every, every one of them indicated they would come back, because they liked it so much. So the discussion was very, it was very helpful, it was, it gave us some good direction in terms of some of the ideas that people are coming up with, where, and this is a program that folks are generating themselves, we're not leading this, we're just providing the opportunity for discussion about it, so that we're not coming to everyone with a plan, we're just trying to develop the plan based on their input. So it's been, it's an interesting approach to this concept and this issue of housing, which is based upon some of the latest discussions about it, is now becoming an issue for workforce housing, called workforce housing as opposed to just affordable housing, it's affordability for everyone, it's a workforce housing concern. So we're looking at that as, and taking that as a serious matter, it's an issue that affects both the Commonwealth, this community, and then the nation. So we're trying to think of, make more of a leadership approach towards getting on the front of it, and see if we can get, come up with some solutions that might lead the rest of the Commonwealth in a direction that might make sense. So anything else you want to add to that, Mike? I know you were part of that as well.
Yeah, one of the other key takeaways from the program, from studying over the winter and preparing for this forum, is that this is a way to bring the community together to talk about important issues. And the important issue that we discussed this last week was housing, and we, you know, plan to continue that into the fall, as Bill mentioned, but this could focus around any community issue. So we started small, last month with 25 people, this month with 50 people, and we're hoping to increase the size of that in the fall, to the point where if six months, a year, two years from now, we have an issue that we need to discuss, that our elected officials, our administration, our boards and committees need to hear from folks of a very diverse demographic across the town, what's important to them, and we can bring that group together, and we're assembling the contact information and that sort of thing. And I guess the other takeaway is if you get a survey, you know, from the town, we'd ask that you consider filling it out and returning it, because we do take it seriously, and as Bill mentioned, that's where we populated the group from, the folks who filled the survey, and on the last question, would you be willing to be, may we contact you, and would you be willing to participate? They checked yes, and we followed up and filled that room with many of those folks.
And Bill, who was the gentleman that spoke at the Chamber of Commerce Awards Breakfast? Was it Secretary of?
Oh, there was, you know, Mike Kenealy, he was, he's the Secretary of Economic Development for this.
Economic Development. Half his talk was about the housing crunch in the whole state.
Exactly.
Yeah.
He's, it's housing and transportation are the two biggest issues facing the Commonwealth, and we're trying to address the transportation issue by bringing the train to Foxborough, but also trying to address the housing issue, like having a conversation about how we might develop more opportunities for folks, but in a way that really considers and takes into consideration what's important to the community. So in other words, we don't want. So, in other words, we don't wanna, we don't wanna come in with a development project that's gonna really impact and negatively affect the quality of life in the community. So, it's, I think that's the biggest mistake a lot of developers don't consider in the long-term is, you know, how does this really impact the community in the long-term? Does it, how does it change the, the makeup of a community and how does it really affect the, the reasons why people came there in the first place? And I think that's something that we wanna take that into consideration strongly before we come up with a plan that, uh, that change, that provides for that solution.
Thank you.
A lot of times the folks that are, um, part of this discussion about housing, um, or any other issue, they're, they're middle-aged career folks and a, a lot of times these issues may or may not affect them. But the other night, folks turned to, what about our children and what about our parents? Um, and there were some seniors in the room and there was one young person with a, with a baby in the room, but otherwise, as people started thinking about, well, it does affect me because it's affecting, you know, uh, you know, both, you know, all ends of the spectrum of my family. It was an interesting conversation.
All right. So, and then, um, last but not least, we're getting some really good feedback about the new website. Um, I appreciate the, the editorial in the paper about that. That was, good to see that. It was very positive, so... And also, um, the feedback we get from folks has been very positive as well, so we are going to, the agenda was just filled up so quickly, so we just wanna make sure that we think we're gonna have it on the ninth, Amanda, at this point. So, a demonstration for you all, but you certainly can look at it now. We're still filling in a lot of the various pages with more information and, and certainly, members of the board are welcome to, to provide additional input in terms of what we can add to the, to your page, um, in terms of things that, uh, we think may, makes sense, but what you collectively think is important as well, so, um, we certainly welcome that input. All right? Those are my, my three major points for today.
Mike?
We got that public hearing, right?
I thought it was, uh...
Seven thirty.
I apologize. Sorry, Mike. I'll put you on hold. Thought it was 7:45. All right. Um, there we go. Okay.
All right, move to open public hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 25th, 2019, beginning at 7:30 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall 40 South Street, on the application of an on-premises annual wine and malt restaurant license pursuant to MGL Chapter 140, Section 177A, and the Code of Town of Foxborough General Bylaws, 71 Amusements and Local License Regulations, and application to obtain an automatic amusement license for New England Authentic Eats, doing business as Papaginos, 211 North Street, manager Joanne Northrup. Oh, hold on, there's one more sentence here, sorry. Additionally, another paragraph, licensee requests approval of a common vic and seven-day entertainment license for establishment hours of operation.
All right, welcome.
Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about, uh, you guys, uh...
Well, right now, we're looking to get a liquor license and, um, the entertainment, we, I mean, we only have a few games in there for the amusement. While we're, the hours were open.
And, 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 um, you guys are, are the owners of the Papaginos franchise?
No, it's a corporation.
Corporation, okay.
So, I just run the, the one on 211 North Street.
Okay. And, uh, any other, any questions?
I guess, so this is a new license, speaking of the alcohol, not a change from the new corporation, from the old corporation name to the new corporation name.
Right.
Yeah, 'cause I, I think they had one years ago.
Yes.
At one point, beer and wine and, uh, just, uh, didn't...
I don't think it was making enough money to keep the license at the time and they went away from it, but now they're coming back.
They're coming back, okay. What's your normal question on, uh...
Do we have an available license?
We have two, actually, right now. These are the last two, uh, being requested right now.
Okay.
They've been actually set dormant for a long time, um, and then suddenly they came in and then next thing you know, there were a couple other people looking for them too, so, um, obviously the popularity of, of beer and wine is actually growing, uh, in light of the fact that there is a lot of interest in, in beer as a culture, uh, and also as, uh, in wine is, and just in the tasting part of it, so there's, there's quite a bit, a lot of people like, like, especially with Papaginos, Pizzar and, and wine and, and a beer, so...
Yeah.
That's pretty, go, they go pretty, pretty much hand-in-hand at these days, so...
And you'll be teaching everybody, uh...
Yep, all the managers and the, um, shift leaders took the alcohol training and all the team members took an alcohol training also on it.
Great, thank you. Um, this is a public hearing. Anybody, um, have any thoughts, questions? All right. Any other questions from the board? All right.
We wanna close the public hearing?
No, you asked.
Yeah.
I was reading the application.
I did it right this time.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, move to approve New England Authentic Eats LLC, doing business as Papaginos at 211 North Street, applications for an on-premises annual wine and malt, like, restaurant license, common vic license, seven-day entertainment license, and automatic amusement license.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, good luck.
Thank you.
Now, we've got the same thing for the other location.
Correct.
It's 7:42. By the time you read it.
Yeah, it will be, will be 7:45.
Just looking at my public hearing, that was just a little bit over there. All right. The Board of Selectmen, acting as local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 25th, 2019, beginning at 7:45 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall 40 South Street, on the application of an on-premises annual wine and malt restaurant license and pursuant to MGL Chapter 140, Section 177A, and the Code of Town of Foxborough General Bylaws, Chapter 71, Amusements and Local License Regulations, and application to obtain an automatic amusement license for New England Authentic Eats LLC, doing business as Papaginos, 8 Commercial Street, manager Dwayne Dunn. Additionally, licensee requests approval of a common vic and seven-day entertainment license for the established hours of operation.
Move to open public hearing.
Uh, move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Good. Welcome.
How you doing?
So, anything different than before?
No. We're Jason, we're brother and sisters there.
Awesome. Uh, any questions?
So, I guess, is this, again, how many licenses available? Is this like node-based or anything?
That you'd have to check with Bill, but I know we have two beer and wine licenses and, uh, that'll be the last two.
So, this would be the last one.
This would be the last one.
They're on either end of town too, so one's North Street and one's a separate node, so...
And would this give us no more available then for...
That's correct.
Beer and wine.
For beer and wine.
Just beer and wine. We still have all alcohol licenses available.
Okay.
And same, you've done the courses and taught everybody that...
Yes, sir.
Proper, okay. Again, it's a, uh, any other questions from the board?
No.
Public hearing, any questions from the audience? All right. Move to close.
All right, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve New England Authentic Eats LLC, doing business as Papaginos at 8 Commercial Street, applications for on-premises annual wine and malt restaurant license, common vic license, seven-day entertainment license, and automatic amusement license.
Second.
All those in favor? I got to do it today. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. You guys ready? You wanna go? Don't mind coming early?
No.
Sure?
No.
Doesn't happen often.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Hey, Chris.
Hey.
Thank you.
Good.
Chris, all right. Thank you. All right, Chris, you're, uh, you're on.
Um, all right, so it's pretty self-explanatory. Uh, what we're looking to do is, uh, set up just over 7, 800 flags on the common, um, in different colors, representing different years. Setup would be 8/24, takedown would be 9/1. Um, 9/1, we would hold a small event, a speaker event kind of thing. Um, you'd hear from somebody in recovery, a family that has lost a loved one, um, and maybe a few other motivational-type speakers, um, nothing crazy. Uh, this has never been done before. Um, traditionally, August is, uh, International Overdose Awareness Month and a lot of places just have a vigil on 8/31 and they have the flags representing, uh, the current year loss. So, what I'm looking to do is 2015 through 2018, which, like I said, uh, is just over 7, 800 flags. Originally, I wanted to do six-by-eight sized flags, but it was gonna cost us over $10,000 to do and I would rather put that money towards treatment, uh, for people, so we're gonna use the smaller flags, um, the, like, the landscaper flags. It's still gonna have the same effect. Um, it's gonna be pretty powerful driving around the common and seeing over 7,000 flags representing a life that has been lost in the state of Massachusetts due to an accidental overdose.
And what's your organization, Chris? Just so people out there know.
Actually, uh, it's not an organization. This has been, um, since I got into this, it's been something that I've wanted to do and I've watched over the years as, uh, overdose awareness month and then the August 31st, 1st has sort of grown throughout the communities. It's just gotten bigger and bigger and now I just really wanna really bring it to, to light, like, this is, you know, this is a lot. This is a lot of lives that have been lost, um, and the J.C.'s are the umbrella that, um, we'll be doing it under.
Okay. Any questions? From the board? Um, my thought is you do know that, uh, you know, we have the farm stand there. What part of, um...
So, what, like we had said, we, we, we would keep it up toward the bandstand area, um, and use that area up there.
That last section where the farm stand is, we won't even, we won't even have to touch.
Down here, we won't.
Won't touch.
Okay, and it won't interfere with the, the concerts on the common either?
No, because, knock on wood, it's not gonna rain anymore.
Oh, they'll be down on the 15th?
They're down on the 15th.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, the flags would go directly, that triangle in front of the car, the bandstand?
Well, they'll be in different sections.
Yeah, it'll probably be that section that's on the left of the bandstand and on the right on the bandstand. It won't go any further than the flagpole toward this way.
So, when you mentioned irrigation, uh, landscape flags, like the irrigation, the small, little ones?
I mean, it's for, I think there's a thousand in the box and it's like so much more affordable.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're very expensive.
So, I, like I said, you know, 10,000 as opposed to about 500, you know, if I can raise money, I'd rather put the money towards putting people in treatment, so...
7,000 flags on, on the common, regardless of the size, is gonna be a pretty powerful statement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Are you guys concerned at all about having 7,000 flags up there, like anybody just, you know, pulling over?
If somebody really wants a, a, a blue flag that's, you know, this big.
Yeah.
They really have to have it.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll know why it's up there. That's the thing is, you know, we're gonna make lawn signs that say, 2015, these are how many people passed because of it, you know, these are how many people we lost and, you know, if they're gonna take a flag, they're gonna take a flag.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if there's gonna be, um...
So, we can't do thing, we can't do, um, banners on the common anymore, right?
Right.
Right, so what we're gonna do is, um, the, like, the signs that use for, like, the Selectmen, the lawn signs?
Yeah.
The lawn signs. They'll be periodic lawn sign, lawn signs with sponsorship on anybody that sponsors, um, but it won't be... Yeah, and then, just like, like she said, it, so like for 2018, the number can't be final and there's always, for 2017, there's, there's about a 300 and, there's about a 394, um, the ME estimates, there'll be about 394 more deaths when the final numbers come in, 'cause they're not in. So, that'll also be on the lawn sign that people need to understand that, like, so, you know, 2069 was the number that everybody thought for 2016. Well, it's really not 2069. It's actually up to like 2,200, but, um, people don't understand that. It's reported. Um, so there's, there's some facts that will be on those lawn signs. And then on that first, um, we would like to invite some foundations to be able to represent themselves. No, um, you know, no treatment centers, nothing like that. It's more of, like, The Sun Will Rise, which is Robin Hughes Bean, Houston Bean out of Braintree. She lost her son, uh, Nick, to an accidental overdose and what she's done is she's created this foundation that helps support people, uh, going into treatment. The Zacks Fund. Zacks Fund helps people go to Plymouth House, which is a 12-step program in New Hampshire. I'm not looking to put all kinds on very small amount, 'cause those are the people that if I do raise any money, if we do raise any money, though, that's where the money's gonna go. It's gonna go to those foundations, so...
Great. Well, I have a bunch of those metal H's if you need those. Save a few pennies.
I do too, Doc. Just sitting in surgery case.
Just in case. Well, that's great. I think it's gonna be an outstanding, uh, reality check.
Yeah.
And I think it will catch on. Um, I think, again, we'll be the leaders here in Foxborough and others will want it and the J.C.'s will keep the flags and if it wants, you know, if someone in Wapoe wants it displayed there, we'll, we'll travel the, for Wapoe, whatever.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, keep us appraised.
The other thing, do we have to consider if there's gonna be sponsorship? So, we've kind of always had a hard and fast rule about, like, none of those lawn signs, so if the lawn signs have company names on the common, do we need to think about that at all?
So, I, I, we didn't chat, uh, obviously, but I don't think a sponsor's gonna go on the lawn sign because we don't really, previously, when we thought we were looking at $10,000 for a sponsor, um, but we're not.
Okay.
Right, 'cause, so I have a young man that's, um, if you look at the graphics, it's pretty cool. Um, he's in recovery and he's done, he's gone a little overboard. He's also done shirts and everything else. I just let him have at it, 'cause he's very excited about this. Um, but he's also built me a website and on the website, we can, if anybody sends a, a donation...
It would, it would just be information on the signs. It wouldn't be a sponsor.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Chris. Thank you.
So, you have to approve it.
We do.
I can make up a motion.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, move to approve the Stakes Are High event on the Town Common as proposed.
Second.
Okay, all those favor?
Posed?
Now I can say, "Good job." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now we can get busy.
All righty, um, uh, Bill, you wanna talk about the FY19 Reserve Fund transfers?
Sure, so there's actually two types of transfers we're gonna talk about tonight and, uh, these are just more informational to, for the board, but, um, the, uh, I'm gonna be meeting with the advisory committee tomorrow night. We had, we had a, a meeting with them last week to sort of give them a heads-up of where we were. Um, then, on, last week, we indicated that we thought we'd be around 192,000. We've actually revised that downward to 184,000, uh, in terms of where we are at this point. So, the, um, the, the, the various of town departments, uh, is no surprise, uh, we had, we had, uh, several shortfalls in the finance department due to the several vacancies that we had this past year. Uh, inspection salaries, we actually had a shortfall due to, um, primarily because a person left, the longtime employee in the department left. Uh, we didn't have enough money to pay all the, uh, the final, um, separation costs of, of, of vacation time and, and some, uh, quarter, it's like 25% of the sick leave payout. Um, and then we also had a cost associated with our workers' compensation audit, um, so that, that affected that, that amount overall. So, we, we're actually, um, in, in, in overall, right now, we're looking at about 182,000 total, uh, that's gonna be, uh, transferred, they're looking to be transferred through the Town Manager transfers at this point, 184,000. And, uh, we do, all that money is available in the various town departments. We actually have sign-offs on all the various town departments, uh, agreeing to those sign-offs. Those, there were several departments that actually had additional funds for various reasons, 'cause they managed it well, which is a, a good thing, and also because of the fact that, um, they would get some vacancies in other departments that, uh, turned the time that was, there was a vacancy plus the time it took to, to fill the position, there was additional money that's available, which is a pretty common occurrence throughout the year. So, we have, uh, adequate funds to, to shore up those, uh, those budgets that were short. Um, let's try to keep this in perspective that, um, we're looking at, uh, really, you know, the overall cost impact, uh, while it is, 184,000 dollars is not an insignificant amount, it, it's still one-quarter of 1%. Uh, while it is, a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars is not an insignificant amount, it, it's still one quarter of one percent, which, um, in the scheme of things, of a, of an eighty million dollar operation, um, it's a pretty small amount. Uh, so it's, uh, I know that last year, we, I think we were somewhere in the order of about ninety-two thousand dollars in transfers that we did. Um, the hundred thousand dollars this year was primarily due to, uh, the shortfalls in the finance department because of vacancies that we had to fill, uh, on a temporary basis. And so, uh, when you, when you look at those, and look at that, that's really the, the major difference between this year and last. Um, we also, uh, moving on to the, to the, um, reserve fund transfer, these, uh, these were just the town manager transfers that I was talking, referring to. The, the reserve fund transfer was, is primarily for the legal budget. Um, I, you know, I've indicated throughout the year that we were gonna run short in that account. Uh, we actually are about sixty-two thousand short in that amount right now. But we're taking into consideration that we still have bills coming in for the month of June, uh, from town council and from labor council. So we, we think we'll be, we're, we're gonna ask for the full transfer of seventy-five thousand, which we did last year, the same, actually the same amount that we transferred last year. So we're going to, we think, um, we'll probably be using most of that, or if not all of that, for the, for the, for the remainder of this fiscal year. And that will bring us into full balance. So that's where we are right now. I'm gonna be meeting with the Ad, AdCom tomorrow night to go over that same information with them, but I wanna make sure you had the same information they did, so we can through, uh, so we can go through it tonight.
And you already gave them a heads up two weeks ago.
I did.
You made a presentation already.
Actually, I was, I think it was, it was last week, yeah, yeah, last Wednesday night. I, I actually was there to, to give them the full rundown of those, of those numbers as well.
Any questions from the board?
When you met with them last week, you had, um, a higher number?
We did, actually. We were looking at a, uh, uh, town manager transfers about a hundred and ninety-two thousand. We were able to trim that back to about a hundred and eighty-four.
Any other questions?
Any, any money that, that's, that's transferred and not used goes back into?
We follow the free cash at the end of the year. Yeah, so it's, either way, even if it, um, doesn't, um, even if it's more than we need, uh, it'll, it'll resort back to, to free cash at the end of the year.
Great. Thank you, Bill.
All right, you're welcome.
Um, is, uh, Schneider Electric coming? Do you know?
I don't believe they are. They, this is, um...
We make that presentation now?
Yeah, I'll get, we can do that, um, if you, if you, if you want. We'll, we'll get into that. So this is a good, good story. Um, and I'm happy to be able to talk about this. And this is, again, this is a case where we actually have developed a good relationship with, with, with Schneider Electric and they're, they're trying to be good partners with us. And they have additional parking available at one of their lots, which, uh, close, it was at the end of, located at the end of Bird Street. Uh, it's a, it's a lot that doesn't get a lot of use. And, uh, so therefore, they, they indicated that, we indicated to them at one point that we, we could use some additional parking spaces because of, you know, the additional, uh, the, uh, the new success of the downtown that's being generated with the new open, opening of new restaurants and activities. So we approached them and, and then they came back to us and said, you know something, we can, we can afford to give up about forty-three spaces. So we have, uh, cut, cordoned off that area. Uh, Roger Hill has identified the area, um, through G.I.S. and is actually identifying, and then, well, we've locked off those spaces. We have provided you with a license agreement, which was, which is, uh, which will be between the town and Schneider Electric to for the use of those, of those, uh, spaces. We will maintain those spaces like they're our own. Uh, and we will also ensure them so that in case, so that anything happens on those spaces, we will be, they'll be covered by the town. The license agreement has been reviewed by town council, um, and they have, they have, they've provided some minor changes to it. And, uh, we've gone back and forth a few times, but the agreement that you guys see before you tonight has been finalized and is ready to be signed. So I wholeheartedly recommend this because I think it's a nice improvement for the downtown area. Um, uptown area, call it what you will, but it's, uh, it's really gonna be helpful, especially to the, to the restaurant on that end. And, um, and we're working on another solution for the, for the other end, uh, working with the housing authorities. Hopefully, that'll be coming out shortly to see if we can provide some additional spaces on the other end of town, up near the, near the fire station. So, um, all, both very good stories.
Well, that's, that's outstanding. It's also gonna help the library, uh, too. You know, a lot of meetings at the library and...
Exactly.
Uh, recently, I saw a few signs out on, um, the Auto Pot Store that I think there were a lot of people parking in there, but...
So even, even if, if it's space for the, the employees to park, so it would free up spaces for, for the, for the patrons.
Absolutely.
So it's a good, it's a good, so I'm really grateful to, uh, to Schneider Electric for being such a good partner with the committee on this, this particular project.
Yeah. Outstanding.
Do we, do we have a estimated cost, uh, to the town for maintaining that lot?
Um, it's, it's primarily snow removal, sweeping, things of that nature. I wouldn't think it'd be all that significant.
It's incremental.
It is.
But it's not free.
That's right. Exactly right.
So there, there is a, 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 a small cost to pay.
There is.
But it's, you know...
But the value is, I think, is, I wish I had, was that, that cost.
Dollar for dollar for forty-three spaces, you know, ten thousand dollars a space, you know.
Exactly. It's all worth it. That's a good question. That's a fair question.
Any other questions?
What's the difference between the gray outline? So I, obviously the yellow spaces are the spaces, but the gray outline?
Will that be offense?
Um, let me take a look at this real quick.
I think it's offense.
Yeah, they're gonna have to put up, uh, they're gonna have to separate it.
They're putting something up.
Yeah, is it bar, is a barrier. There's, we're actually gonna have a barrier so they don't actually, um, so they're gonna try and close off the area so that they, so cars can drive through into their property. So we're gonna have that barrier there.
That's the town's?
Town will put that up.
Put that up.
And will we have like no overnight parking and some kind of sign, whatever signage?
No overnight parking.
It'll be the same rules as regular parking.
A convenient space for overnight parking areas. There are, I think there's adequate parking, um, in the area for that. But they, I think this is really for the overflow parking for the area.
All right, uh, I'll accept the motion.
Move to approve agreement with Schneider Electric to provide forty-three additional public parking spaces.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Schneider.
Thank you, Schneider. Exactly right.
Yeah. All right, uh, Bill, reappoint?
Yeah, so, um, some good news and some bad news is that I do recommend that you reappoint Christine. The unfortunate news is that she's, uh, accepted a new position, uh, with the town of Rentham. And we'll be starting, um, uh, we believe that the, uh, second or third week of May, uh, I'm, I'm, July, rather, um, of July, which will be around July ninth, eighth or ninth in that area. So we're working, I wanna continue to work with her and with the town administrator from Rentham to see how we can work through that, because we, obviously, we have some year-end closing stuff, then they have some year-end, and year-end opening, year-opening stuff that we have to do. And we're working to try and fulfill those needs. Um, I have every reason to believe it will, it will be, it will work out. But it's gonna be a little bit challenging for the next few weeks as we, as we work through that. Um, some good news is that we are making progress towards the filling of the, of the finance director slot. I know that Leah's been working diligently on that committee and, and I know we're, we're narrowing that field. Um, hopefully, we'll get a decision to by the end of the month, uh, end of July. And, um, we also have the, the position posted for Christine's position vacancy. And, uh, we're getting, we've got, we've got some, some good candidates to consider. So we're pleased about that, which is good news. I think we may have a solution to that earlier than we thought. So I'm believe, I'm glad to be able to report that out. So, but in the meantime, I do recommend your reappointment for the time being. And, um, I'll have to really think about what I'm gonna do after, after July, after July ninth. Um, but we'll, uh, we'll come, we'll come up with a plan, I'm sure.
Any questions?
No, I'll just say having the positions open at the same time, I mean, there's been some good candidates that, you know, maybe weren't right for finance director, but are gonna be great for this position. So having that big pool at once, I think, you know, obviously, it's not ideal, but...
Is the intent to hire the finance director and then hire Christine's replacement?
It, it is ideally, but, um, but I think if we had a, a good opportunity to hire someone that really met all the skill set, um, I think we might wanna have to move for, sooner than that, only because, um, especially somebody who had everything that we needed that understands Munis, 'cause we can't really sit idly and let that happen. I, it's gonna be hard to, I have to train people, et cetera, to get, you know, to know our systems. Um, it would be, I, it would be ideal to do that, but I, I don't know if I'll be able to do that, Chris, in all honesty.
Is Munis a, a widely used, uh, software platform?
On the municipal side of, on the municipal side it is, actually. But, um, it's not universal, but it is, it's pretty widely used.
Yeah, so there's two main ones. There's PeopleSoft and, and Munis. Uh, so we're looking for somebody with Munis experience, but, uh, yeah, municipal side. The, um, the thing with the, the finance director pool, and we've talked about, you know, all along, this is, um, well, we've had a lot of applications, uh, you know, more than eighty applications. The, the folks that, uh, that our committee is, is looking to narrow the pool down to, um, for the, the quality of an individual that we need to, um, you know, to manage the finances and revenue for a, a town of this complexity. Um, we don't wanna rush into this. We wanna make sure we make a, a, a smart decision. So it, uh, amongst those, as Leah alluded to, there are a lot of folks who are, you know, accountants, CPAs, et cetera, that might not be, um, the right fit for the finance director, but, but, uh, but certainly may, you know, may be interested in the, in this. We've relabeled the assistant accountant position to, uh, director of accounting. So it's, uh, you know, same pay range, uh, similar duties. But, um, you know, the, we, we think we've got a much larger pool, so it, it may be that we're able to move faster on that one. So, uh, you know, ideally, we would like to, 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 you know, to fill the finance director role, but it may not be practical, uh, to do that. It may be, uh, best. And we'll see as we move along, but it, it may be more practical to do it, uh, in the other order.
We, we changed the title on the recommendation of Todd Hassett, as well as, uh, Bill Yuchner, who were serving with on the, on the, on the selection committee, indicating that that would be, uh, a more attractive title for somebody who's, who's looking to, to serve in that capacity.
But then when I saw them together, so it sounded good, we were talking, but then when I looked at the posting page, it's finance director and then director of finance.
Director of accounting.
Director of accounting.
Accounting.
Oh, I posted on the town website that's director of finance, I think. I'll have to go look.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be, uh...
Be director of accounting.
Director of accounting, is what it should be. If that's mislabeled, we'll have to change.
It might just be the PDF, not the actual job title, so.
Yeah. And, you know, in, in reality, what we've had in the past is, uh, our assistant accountant has really done our town accounting, even though the, the finance director is, um, is our official town accountant. In the past, our, our town accountant is, uh, the strength has actually been in, in finance, not accounting. So this is not, not unusual to have, to, you know, or unusual to, um, to retitle this as director of accounting, 'cause we would expect that this person will be doing the main accounting function, even though the, the finance director, um, does oversee that.
And it is correct, so I apologize for that on my...
So you, uh, my recommendation is the same at this point.
So we're gonna reappoint her until a specific date?
It'll probably be to the next meeting, to the next meeting.
All right, I'll, uh, accept the motion.
So move to reappoint Christine Dupras as interim finance director, town accountant, till, till, until July eighth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, next up, uh, town manager evaluation. We'll, uh, that over to, uh, Chris.
Can I leave the room now? Is that okay?
Now, so, um, Mike and I, um, met a few weeks back. Early on, maybe six or eight months ago, I said to Mike, look at this process. Look to see if there is a better process. He came back and said, no, this is, you know, a good process. So we, we went with that. Uh, we did have some glitches along the way with the, the software system not being able to be used, but that was kinda outside of our control. So, uh, when Mike and I met, all the envelopes that the board provided, um, were sealed. We opened them together, looked at them together, um, went through them all and put together the, the review that's in front of you. I did agree, um, with Jim, you know, even like last year, there, there needs to be some good constructive criticism in anybody's review. Um, so we, you know, went through it and, um, compiled, what I think was evident by looking at all of these reviews, um, a true snapshot of this past year. Wanna allude to anything further, Mike?
Um, as you look through this review summary or evaluation summary, you will, uh, you won't see all of the comments. Um, yeah, you know, as we had mentioned before, because we can't do that, because that's Bill's personnel file. But you will see comments from, uh, multiple comments from every, uh, board of selectmen member, um, who was present during this, this past year. And, um, and those are used in full quotation. So the, you know, the, the, what you put in as a, as a comment was used, um, without being altered. Uh, I think there may be one or two where some things in parentheses, and that was just for, for clarity, a word. But otherwise, it's, it's your quotations from the evaluations that you did with Bill. And I think at this point, uh, almost all of the selectmen have had the opportunity, um, to meet one-on-one with Bill to, to debrief the evaluation. And if, and if, and if anyone hasn't, uh, Bill is, of course, as he's mentioned, open to that, uh, one-on-one sit-down, because, um, you know, in his own words, he, he takes us seriously and he wants to be able to, um, to work on anything that, that, where he receive, receives constructive feedback.
I, I think, um, in, in doing an evaluation, whether it's for Bill or for anybody really, if you're not truly honest on the evaluation and not willing to put constructive comments in the comment section and willing to sit down with the employee, then you're doing everybody a disservice. You have to be honest. Uh, and that's how, that's how people grow. That's how people learn. And that's how you, you, you bring people to the best that they, they can be. So I think, I know in the past, um, when we've done the, the, uh, evaluation, some selectmen have left the comment section blank. And to me, that's the most important part of the evaluation. You know, you can check a box, you can put a number in. But unless you put a comment or are willing to stand by that comment and have a, have a direct dialogue with the person that you're evaluating, evaluating, then it's useless. And I just hope that, you know, the department heads, when they're evaluating their direct reports, that they take that, that same tact, 'cause it's only gonna make the, the, the employees stronger. And that's, that's what the goal of, of the evaluation is, is to, you know, highlight the good things, highlight the things that they need improvement and work with them to get to that next level. So...
I, I can tell you in, in that, um, in that regard, uh, the first year that Bill did evaluations on, on all his department heads, uh, most of them went back, because there, some had no comments, some didn't, there weren't comments on everything. And so that has filtered down throughout the organization, where department heads are holding, you know, their direct reports responsible for, you know, um, you know, filling them out, making comments, and then also doing the sit-down one-on-one as a, as a requirement, so that people grow and develop as, as, uh, as our town employees.
On, on the flip side, if you constantly give an employee a glowing evaluation and then you end up terminating them and they have to go through the evaluation and it's glowing reports, it's not honest, it's like, wh- why'd you fire them?
Exactly.
You know? So it's, it, it really is an important tool and you have to take it seriously.
So a couple of the other things too, like going through the, the different reviews, and you can see it in here. The theme shared by most of us, um, it was a challenging year. Um, you know, a lot of stuff thrown at, at you, us. Um, so that was, um, that was evident by, by all the board members. Um, and then I would like to kinda go through, um, the accomplishments. Um, and then one of the things on the objectives for setting goals, and it was your comment, Bill, like we, as a board, need to discuss what we feel. So I don't know if we do that tonight or our very next meeting.
If you're not prepared to do it tonight, I wouldn't do it unless you are prepared to do it.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know what the rest of the board is. I think some discussion tonight and then I think our next meeting, we should kinda all come together at this table and kinda prioritize.
It's, it's really the mo, one of the most important discussions you can have all year. And I, I certainly recommend that you have a full board present when you do it.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think, um, because it's, it's, it's the guidance that I need and, and the staff needs in order to know what's important to all of you. And that's what we're trying to, to, to garner our work and, and shape our work accordingly. So, um, yeah, I, I strongly recommend that if you're not prepared to discuss tonight, certainly have general discussion. But, um, if you, if you have more details you wanna talk about, we can have it at the next meeting.
It makes sense to have the full board here. So just to highlight some of the accomplishments from last year, um, successfully appointed a new fire chief and assistant town manager who were promoted... fire chief and assistant town manager, who were promoted from within, successfully negotiated labor contracts with three different bargaining units, produced a balanced budget while still leaving room for replenishing free cash and stabilization, represented, representing Foxborough as the chairman of the board on the southeast Massachusetts Regional Emergency Communications Center. Bill led the effort finalizing the regional dispatch within the towns of Easton, Foxborough, Mansfield, Norton. Bill ensured completion of the process on the RFP and the selection for the firehouse and funeral home project. Bill continued to look for ways to save the town money, and most people don't see that. He led the town and avoided litigation during a very difficult and complex HR issue. Continued smart economic growth by partnering the community and businesses. So those are some of the accomplishments. And then you have some big stuff, what we all do, too, I mean, ahead of us, with a new finance director, new police chief.
So something that I think is kind of missing from here, and this is my first time going through this, so I don't recall seeing last year, just to know it was on there or not, but I guess I expected there to be an average on here, of all of our, so we know where Bill reads himself, but I fully expected there to be an average of kind of where we landed, that I don't see on here.
So Chris and I did look at the average, we did the average together, and it was 3.16.
Okay.
Was the cumulative average.
So do we, I feel like that should be part of this document, unless that's documented somewhere else, I think.
It normally is, I think.
So I think any review should have the numerical rating, you know, comments, summary, what you did well, your objectives, and I think there's areas for improvement. So while objectives are great, you know, hire a finance director, hire a fire chief, that's everyone, in everything we do, has, you know, room for improvement. So I think that there should be something added for next year. And I know that you guys have heard me harp on this, but I'm just, I really think heading into performance evaluation time with no performance evaluation system, I'm worried about downstream, you know, next year, if something isn't printed out and put in a file or is lost, it's lost right now. So, you know, we're back to paper, we don't have a system right now, and I just want to make sure that everyone kind of understands that's not just for this, that's for the whole town right now. So it's really a priority.
So you wanted just to address that?
Sure, I can tell you, we are actually doing evaluations throughout the organization during this month, and so Bill is receiving them right now, paper copies, from department heads, for him to do his evaluation, and same thing all the way downstream, so nothing is being lost, these are being put in the file, they are being debriefed with the employees, and they will have the grade on them. The grade on his total evaluation, his personnel file, is a 3.16 that's in there. And maybe, Chris, if you wouldn't mind, you know, writing that grade on the bottom there, signing it, I can put that in there, or you all sign it. But, you know, but Chris did see that, and he has the tally of how those numbers were all put together as well.
So I would say my average probably was higher than that, so it's not like I'm, you know, disagreeing with what's on here, I just think that there's room for improvement. I mean, I had two pages of typed comments, you know, so when we pick each one, I think it still gets back to, you know, a very objective picking, kind of one comment, and not having areas for improvement, and not having.
Just so you know, I read all of the evaluations.
Yeah.
So, and I take every one of the comments seriously, so while it may not be, it's a summary evaluation, which is the way it's supposed to be done, but I certainly look at all of them in detail.
So I think that's why having the sit-down with the town manager, going over your comments, is the most productive, because this is just a summary. Those evaluations are part of his personnel file, and not for the public review. So you take a summary, and this is what the, pretty much the public can see. But the most important part is your comments on your two pages, sitting down with him.
Already did it, yeah.
Which he actually did, no, he actually did.
I understand, but I'm saying that, for his evaluation, that's the most important part. This is nothing.
Yeah, well, I don't want to say this is nothing, because this is a public record, so this is something.
I understand, but I'm talking from his development and his evaluation, what we put in those evaluations individually, and we sit down with him, is more meaningful to him than what the summary is.
And I think that, we probably need to look at that as well, too, areas for improvement. Like, I think, I think we can look at the whole process.
So Chris was reading from the top of page two, which is accomplishments, and then he mentioned one of the objectives for the coming year, but the entire first year does point out areas for improvement. So those are taken from your comments, so these, you know, these were not, you know, were not changed, this is areas that you've pointed out, both positive and negative feedback, and I think that's your areas for improvement. And, you know, I'll let Chris comment, but my, I think that this was very reflective, this two-page summary, of
Yeah.
The cumulative, while the grade point here is lower than the grade point of the four of you, the comments here are reflective of the, you know, the accumulation of the comments from all five board members that evaluate. So I think there are areas of criticism, areas of constructive feedback in here, so this isn't just flowery, I wouldn't say, I think this is constructive, and.
Yeah, and when, stop me if you want me to stop Bill, but when I met with Bill, I didn't tell him anything good he was doing, I basically was like, "Hey, this is where I can see you improve," I mean, and that's, I think this is a.
Well, you didn't, you were constructive in terms of.
Yeah, yeah.
It was not, I didn't take any of those discussions to be a negative, I thought they were, I always view it as a learning experience from both sides. So it's something that, when you mention, you know, things that you think that I'd like to see better, everybody has their own difference, different opinions of that, and listen, I take it all, it's probably the more difficult process, because I get one-on-one with people on their evaluations, I have five individuals telling me different things, so I have to deal with that, and that's part of the job that I have. But having said that, I take every one of the comments seriously. I'm disappointed that I didn't get to meet with everybody, because I think that's constructive. And if I didn't meet with you, or, and I don't think it really reflects on anybody here, but it's unfortunate that's the case, because I think that's productive for both of us, to have that conversation, I couldn't agree with you more that that conversation is important.
So I guess I don't want you to think I'm not saying this isn't an accurate reflection, I'm just saying I think there should be a section added on the review and on the summary that says areas for improvement, or focus, or, you know, whatever you want it to be, that's not an objective, that's room for improvement on not just your evaluation, but everyone's evaluation, if that's not the case. Like, you know, Chris, when you sit down for your evaluation at work, I'm sure you don't just go over your accomplishments and objectives, you talk about, you know, "Oh, I want to work on," you know, whatever it is
Yeah.
For the year, what you can improve.
Yeah, I mean, great input. Yeah, we can add that. Any other comments?
Mike, back to one point that Leah made, we did have a software system that we used, are we looking at getting one, or is it just cost prohibitive?
We are looking, but we're looking internally first, so I'm working with the IT department to find out what can we leverage that we're already paying for to do some of this. So the system that we had, it was providing three areas of service to us, and in meeting with Aaron and with Sandra DeAndre, I'm finding out that if we have more knowledge of our MUNIS system, there is stuff that we can accomplish, not all of it, but there's some of it, so we don't want to go out and purchase software where we have stuff that we're already paying for, that can do some of this. So we're taking a more strategic approach to it. When this was purchased, it was the right thing to do, because we didn't have the, you know, the overall, as much knowledge of the HR part of MUNIS, and now we're working to gain that. So there was a position, you met Sandra a while back, and she's someone that we hired that comes with extensive IT and business analysis, knowledge, and experience, and we're working to leverage those skills to use, you know, what we're paying for already, to the max extent that we can. And then we'll buy the piece that we have to. So it's, rather than rushing into getting something, we're finding, even though it's more work on all of us, doing it by paper, we think we're, you know, doing it more, approaching it more prudently, to leverage what we have.
And, you know, just so everyone knows, and I know you guys have heard me say this, because I'm like a broken record about it, but another part of that system was, if we post a job for, I don't know, janitor, let's say, before, when we posted in that system, it would automatically send it out to 160 boards, we would be able to, people would be able to apply online, we could push a button, we could send reject letters, we could track everyone, you know, when we're hiring for some of these positions right now, Mike's having to go out and manually post to certain sites and job boards, and, you know, manual emails back to 80 applicants to decline them, you know, plus other departments, you know, there's a lot more in that system that we're living without right now than just performance evaluations. So I hope we can figure something out quick, and it doesn't go another, you know, couple of months, because I think it is a really important tool. And we've come so far to be back on paper and kind of where we are, I want to.
It's definitely a priority with us, we've had, and as I've said with Mike, I said we have to prioritize and get that resolved, because it's a tool that's really of great value to us.
It's really table stakes nowadays, it's not like a nice-to-have, it's something you have to have.
Right.
All right, so with that, Mike, the 3.16 would, you know, is a favorable review, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So with that, too, per Bill's contract, we're legally obligated to compensate him for that.
So I wasn't in executive session when you met earlier, so I don't know where that sits.
I think we'll just let that statement stand.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, we're contractually obligated to compensate him for it.
Having a successful review.
Yeah.
I agree. All right, thank you, Chris, and Chris headed this up, because at the time, he was chairman, and the chairman's responsibility is to go over the evaluations with the, of the town manager. Thank you for all your hard work, Chris.
And I want to thank each of you for doing this, going through this process, it's never easy to do this, and for either me or for you, so I appreciate the fact that we do have to take the time to go through it. Like I said, I was disappointed in the way it came out in the end, but I also know that, I'm not looking at any of the one of you, because none of you were that law, quite honestly, so I think it's fair to address that in that respect. But having said that, you know, my goal is always to try and improve, regardless of how long I've been doing this, it's never a case of, someone can always improve, I don't care who you are, so I always take criticism of being constructive, to the greatest extent that it's delivered in a constructive way. So I appreciate the fact that you've all taken that position. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think anyone could say that you had an unsatisfactory year by any means.
No, no.
And I don't think, I wouldn't want your job.
No, I appreciate, no, it was a challenging year, and the fact that that theme was through that, throughout the entire process, was, I thought it was extraordinary in many ways, and so I.
We knew it.
Yeah, I think I gained a few more gray hairs this year because of that, so, but thank you.
At least you have here. Anyway.
That's right.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Selectments update? Anybody have any comments before I say a few things?
I was just going to say, you know, with the, I have kids, so at the end of the school year wrapping up, like, I get teary-eyed when I think about some of the teachers that we're so lucky to have, you know, as they wrap up the school year, and kind of hand them off three-day break before the rec program steps in for so many kids, that, you know, just provides them such a great day. So thank you to all the teachers, and all the other groups that see our kids through those nine months of the year.
Thank you. So one of the things that the town got involved in this last year was with the Schneider Electric's permanent solution with the Nippon Reserve Reservoir. I made a quick comment a couple of weeks ago that we haven't heard back from the DEP, and the next day, we heard back from the DEP. I was pretty optimistic at the time, and I'm not so optimistic now. Bottom line is, we did get a letter back from the DEP, they approved the permanent solution of Schneider Electric. Mass DEP did say they were cognizant that public interest still remains, so Mass DEP will continue to maintain open communications as to future efforts regarding the reservoir. Accordingly, the department remains committed to working with you as it pertains to future planning and/or maintenance efforts you may envision for the reservoir. We got this letter, it was addressed to Bill, we all got a copy, the Nippon Reserve Reservoir Commission got a copy, and we're sending it back to council for review, see what next step we can take on that. And lastly, Bill, did you mention two weeks ago about the audit, or was that just in?
Yeah, I actually did, I mentioned it at the, at the, at the AdCom.
AdCom, did you mention it here?
I didn't, I don't know if I have, but so, not yet, but so, we do, we did have a favorable audit, and so I think it's probably good to have the auditor come in and give us a presentation on that. I also made the recommendation at the advisory committee meeting that we do a joint meeting to do that, and I also made mention of the fact that a former colleague of mine in another community has been doing an evaluation of the entire county's communities, to see where in fact they stand financially, and we found that that information was actually quite interesting, and actually quite favorable for Foxborough. Contrary to some of the things that have been said recently, Foxborough's position financially is actually very good, we're actually, where we stand in terms of our tax rate, it's actually right in the middle, it's not too far to the left, too far to the right, it's exactly where we probably should be. And that we live in a, probably one of the most successful counties in the country, and that has to be a consideration, that the reason why our property values continue to grow, and our tax levels continue to grow, is because of where we live. So it's, I think, you know, oftentimes, folks look at that as a reflection of spending, but on the other side of that, spending is necessary to maintain values, property values, and to maintain services that people want. So I think that's the other side of that coin, that oftentimes doesn't always get fully disclosed. So I think it's important that we have that conversation, and perhaps, I was even suggesting, perhaps maybe that my colleague would come in and make a presentation to the board about that information, to see what your thoughts are. And then, and also have Bob Brown come in and give a presentation to the board about the audit.
Would that be on a slow selectmen day, or would that have to be a separate day?
It's entirely up to you, Mr. Chairman, if you want to set up a joint meeting or on a separate board night, or a, I mean, we're heading into the summer months now, which hopefully won't be too busy, but I think now's the time for us to have that conversation and
Absolutely.
And see if we can get ahead of that a little bit, because I think it's really important that, you know, that folks really see that we are doing a lot of good things. And I think it's well documented in the audit, as well as documented in what's come out of the regional study.
Yeah, I would think, I would like to see sometime, either in two weeks or four weeks, getting that on the agenda, invite advisory committee here, and have that presentation on TV.
Great. That seemed to be favorably disclosed by the, received by the advisory committee as well the other night, so.
Awesome, yeah, let's work on that within the next couple of sessions.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we've come around to Mike, assistant town manager's report.
Most of the things were already discussed here, we talked about the finance director recruitment, as well as the director of accounting. There is one other position that we're advertising for, and that's office coordinator for the assessors department, and, you know, each time we advertise a position, we do look at it, we look at, is the position description still accurate, do we need to update the job ad? And this is one where we need more manpower in many places, and, you know, and finance department is one of them, knowing that we're not going to have another position, or have half a position there anytime soon. We've looked at restructuring this position, so it's not just the office coordinator for the assessors department, but also some shared responsibilities that will spill over into treasurer collector and accounting as well. And we'll monitor, that's why we've written up the job description and ad, and we'll see how that works for us, giving a little bit of flexibility, and it makes it a little trickier with the hiring, because you've got to have somebody with dual skills, that, you know, that can flex a little bit, but we've done that in the past successfully. But we've done that in the past successfully, and we expect to do it this time. And that's all I had on my update.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Move to adjourn, accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Suck it. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.